Good evening, we'll call to order a regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodridge and request Deputy Clerk, Management Analyst, Jack Knight, to please call the roll.
Trustee Kagan.
Present.
Trustee Abbott. Trustee Pittenger.
Present.
Trustee Banks.
Present.
Trustee Beavers.
Present.
Trustee Cunningham Pizek.
Present.
Mayor Murphy.
Present. Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, led this evening by Trustee Cunningham Pizek. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're delighted this evening to have the opportunity to recognize and honor a very special employee, Dave Weggener, who is being honored on 35 years of employment as a maintenance worker in the Public Works Department, and I would ask Chris Bethel to join me at the podium and invite Dave to join us also.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. It's with very mixed emotions that I have the honor and privilege to present Dave tonight for his 35 years of dedicated and loyal service. Dave recently submitted his retirement notice to the village and is going to be leaving us in October of this coming year. We've been very lucky to have someone like Dave with us, a proud and dedicated father and grandfather, a military veteran and a former volunteer firefighter here in Woodridge. I think it's hard to even begin to capture what an employee like Dave has done in a few paragraphs and nearly impossible to do it justice with the quality and quantity of work that he's produced for us every day for the last 35 years. To go through just a couple of noteworthy items with Dave, he's an expert equipment operator, from the backhoe to the unloader to our large snowplows. He operates these heavy pieces of machinery and equipment with finesse like they're an extension of himself. He's detail-oriented. While some of the people here, like the chief, might agree I'm obsessed and I like to get the details right on a project, I can say Dave's obsession with maintaining our street sign inventory even exceeds mine. While signs are sometimes overlooked in other communities, when you drive through Woodridge, you see bright reflective signs. They're installed perfectly straight, they're well-maintained, they're in perfect conformance with the applicable traffic regulation standards. Dave also is the one who decals our new squad cars, new dump trucks, as they come in, and same thing, you can see the pride in detail with those logos and letters that are put on every vehicle. Dave, in short, is dedicated to the village and the core services provided by Public Works. He's missed countless family events, holidays, and voluntarily given up his vacations when we've needed him to help respond to the needs of the community. Most importantly, Dave has done these things in a perpetually positive manner. His attitude and demeanor is infectious with the other staff, and he's a positive role model and mentor and leader, really, for all of the staff in the department, and he consistently sets that positive example for the rest of us. He's applied himself with the highest level of quality and efficiency over the last 35 years. During that time, he's had numerous nominations for Employee of the Quarter. He was the Village Employee of the Year in 1989 and then was recognized by his peers in the Public Works Department as the Department Employee of the Year in 2000. You can look at what Dave's done over the last 35 years, and whether it's the signs or the cars that drive down the street, you can see the lasting mark that he's left on the community. We've been very lucky to have had him here with us.
And Dave, on behalf of the community of Woodridge, my fellow elected officials and certainly the citizens of our community, we want to congratulate you on your 35 years of service. And as was indicated by Chris, it just isn't 35 years, it's 35 years of exemplary service, 35 years of commitment, 35 years of excellence, 35 years of being a mentor and a leader in the department. So your service goes far beyond just you and yourself, it goes forth to all of the other employees in the department and indeed across the community. The fact that you've been recognized on so many occasions by your peers is yet a further indicator of the esteem on which you're held by all of the others in the village itself. Please accept this small memento as a token of our gratitude, but I won't give this to you until you introduce someone else in the audience that has equally been supportive to you.
I brought my daughter Hannah, she's my youngest. My oldest is babysitting when she couldn't make it. I'll tell you a little story. When Hannah was eight years old, she got a tumor of cancer. The village, well, this was before the Family Act, Joe Penell went to you, the board, and asked if I could get off, use my sick time indication, but, you know, longer term, you know, a month, to take care of Hannah, when she had to do the operation, do more therapy and all. So that's what made me dedicate this to the village. Hannah's 27 now, Cancer Creek. That's why I'm staying here.
Congratulations, David. And we also have the honor this evening of presenting the Finance Department appropriate recognition, and I would call forward Linda Dalton, our County Manager. We've been informed a few weeks ago that for the sixth consecutive year, the Village of Woodridge received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that's particularly due to the efforts of all of our employees, all of our managers, particularly though, everyone in the Finance Department. Certainly Linda and Diana and all of the others are responsible for this in a major way. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. It's my pleasure to present this, and please also extend our gratitude to the others in the department. It reads, "Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting Presented to the Village of Woodridge for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending April 30, 2010. A Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is presented by the Government Finance Offices Association of the United States and Canada to governmental units and public employee retirement systems whose comprehensive annual financial reports achieve the highest standards in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Please accept this on behalf of citizens of our community, and please extend congratulations to Dave."
Thank you very much.
We then turn to questions from the public. We have no formal public hearing this evening, but we have two additional opportunities, the first of which is for residents and guests to raise questions or comments that are not related to the agenda, and then following that, an opportunity for residents and guests to raise questions or comments on agenda items. So if there is anyone with us tonight that would like to address the board with questions and comments on matters that are not on the agenda, if you could proceed to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Steve Yurk. I live at 2701 Crabtree Avenue, which is near Murphy School. And we have a creek that runs through the back of our property, and recently the storms have caused a lot of damage with the trees that have fallen, causing two power outages in our area. One garage I know was damaged, others had power lines that were down. On both occasions, we had three days out of power, and the second time, we were out a day and a half. My concern is that I have a tree that has been uprooted by the creek, but it hasn't completely fallen. It's currently leaning against another tree that's on my property. And I had an estimate to have it taken down, and it's 2,500, but it could be more. So I don't have that right now, so I'm obviously going to save for that. But in the meantime, there are other trees, as I've gone down there, that are large where the creek has eroded away much of the root system. And I just walked to the other side of Woodridge Drive, I'm on the east side, and on the west side, it seems much better maintained that somebody's taking care of it. Now, I don't know if I'm supposed to be taking care of it, but I'm certainly not engineering enough to know what I'm supposed to be doing to protect the roots from falling. My concern right now is that if that tree does fall, I think it's going to land on a power line again, because there are power lines that also run through the back there. And I'm hoping that you'll have a plan in place in the next few years to maybe address some of those issues in that creek area. It's only about a three-block stretch that runs up to St. Scholastica, so I'm not anticipating you're going to help me with $2,500, but I hope that you'll take this into concern. The one tree that landed on the person's garage, homeowner's covered, because it destroyed something, but if this, I don't want it to destroy something. I want it to not fall. So, thank you for listening.
Well, thank you for sharing that legitimate concern with us, Steve, and that would fall under the purview of the Public Services, Public Works Department, and they will review the matter and they will give the board an overview of the problem and whether are there any current solutions or future solutions that we should be looking at, and they will also be in touch with you.
I would just wanted to mention that I also thought that there might be some grants available for some of these things, if you're trying to improve something that hasn't been improved in a long time, or safety issues, I mean, there might be something available that you can, the Public Works Department can look into.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you.
Does anyone else who would like to, Chris Bethel, please?
I can give a little bit of background right now and then give Mr. Yurk my card for some additional follow-up tomorrow as well. Crabtree Creek, the ownership along the creek does vary. Some locations are actually owned and maintained by the village, some sections are owned and maintained by the Park District, and some are actually owned and maintained by the homeowners who actually each own to the middle of the creek. Back in 2007, when we had engaged V3, who did a community-wide stream bank inventory and assessment, there is a section of Crabtree that we had identified as one of our higher priorities. We had been attempting to receive grant funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program, because it does fall into our NSA area. To date, it had not ranked high enough to receive funding. That was something where we're still continuing to try to seek out other sources. We will send staff out there to take a look at some of the tree issues, and then we'll work with Mr. Yurk regarding some of his concerns near his property as well, and can certainly report back to the Mayor and Board on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bethel. Is there any other guest or resident that would like to address the board on matters that are not on the agenda? If not, it is now an opportunity for residents and guests to address the board on any agenda items, and if there is anyone that would so like to do so, please proceed to the podium.
Good evening, my name is Louis Wardon, 3325 Stillwell Court in Woodridge. And on this evening's agenda, item M, which is a resolution to enter into an agreement for, I guess for lack of better words, temporary billing inspection, code inspection services. I looked through the documents, and your staff really does a lot of work here to go through all this paperwork, but I did not see anything that listed the qualifications of the employees of this consulting firm as to find out their familiarity with the building codes of the village, county, state, et cetera, whatever is used in these applications, and to guarantee that they would do a good job in doing their inspections. I see their rates are, or can be fairly high for these things. And then my question is, how many building inspectors does the village have?
Michael Mays.
First, regarding the contract itself, the village benefits from already working with this consulting firm. TPI currently serves the village in providing plumbing inspections and doing plumbing plan reviews for the village. We have an existing contract with them. We're looking to expand that scope of services, which is why an additional contract is necessary. Anytime that we look to utilize a consultant, part of the review process is to evaluate their qualifications, follow up on references, check with other communities, look at the licenses that are in place for the people who are doing the work. And that was done, obviously, before when TPI was selected to do the plumbing work for the community and has been a part of this process as well. Currently, the Community Development Department has one building inspector and a building commissioner. The need for the use of the consulting services this time is a result of having one of our other building inspectors resign and, because this is obviously during the busy time of the year, we need to utilize the consulting services to get us through the summer as we evaluate the position.
Okay, well, since this is a new contract, I think I would want to look at their qualifications other than just for plumbing. You know, as a homeowner, if I get a building permit, I want work done, and I have to pay for the permit, you know, I would like to make sure that whoever is going to come out and look at the work and sign off on it is qualified to do so.
And certainly, as part of the process, we have evaluated the qualifications. Staff is confident that this firm has the qualifications.
I think those qualifications should be listed either by the village or by the consultant in the agreement, that their people will hold such a level of competence or licensing to work on this project.
Thank you.
Additional question, Michael. Before the recent employee left the village, part of which is the cause for this additional assistance, we had further downsized that department. Do you recall the numbers in terms of building inspectors, wasn't it?
Before 2010, with the reduction, there were four building inspectors.
Four, okay. And now we're down to?
We're down to one currently.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board on matters on the agenda? If not, we thank you for being with us this evening, and now the board has for their consideration approval of omnibus vote items A through N and acceptance of O and P, and I will entertain a motion to do so, and following that, Administrator Rush will give us an overview of the various matters. So the Chair entertains a motion to approve omnibus vote items A and N and accept O and P. Motion by Trustee Cunningham Pizek, second by Trustee Kagan. Okay, motion's been made, and second, Administrator Rush, please give us an overview of the omnibus vote.
Certain. The first item for your consideration is Ordinance Number 201132, granting a preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval and zoning ordinance variation for Megan and Helen Martinez, east side of Route 53, 200 feet south of Everglade Avenue. The applicants are requesting to subdivide their 1.97 acre property into two lots for the construction of one single-family home immediately and another home in the future. Due to the topographic constraints of the property, the applicants are also requesting a building height variation to increase the maximum height of the home from 35 feet to 57 feet in height, as defined by Section 9-22 of the zoning ordinance for Lot 1 of the subject property. While the height relief is 257 feet, the actual height of the home is 26.4 feet, and the variance is required because the village measured the height at the front yard setback line and not at the foundation. Ordinance Number 201133 is granting a minor amendment to the final planned unit development plan and plat for Maple Point Phase 1, 10,330 and 10,335 Argon Woods Drive. In 2003, the Maple Point Business Park approvals were amended to add connection to 103rd Street. The connection was never constructed, and the applicants are now requesting a minor PUD amendment, so the 103rd Street connection will be constructed solely at the discretion of the owners or successor owners of the subject realty. In 2010, the Village Board amended the village code to allow staff the ability to approve minor amendment requests prior to Village Board consideration of the approving ordinance, and staff approval of this request was granted on June 23, 2011. Item C is Resolution Number 452011, waiving the competitive bidding process and authorizing the administrator to purchase certain computer equipment and maintenance from SPS VAR LLC to support the AS400 system. This is a purchase of a new server to support the village's HTE Enterprise database, which includes financial, human resource, licensing, code enforcement, building permits, and other village functions. The existing server has reached its useful life, as the maintenance contract is expiring and the server capacity is nearing its limit. Item D, Resolution Number R462011, making a determination relative to the release of executive session minutes pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. The State Open Meetings Act requires the executive session minutes to be reviewed at least biannually to determine which minutes are fit to be released for public inspection. It has been determined that the minutes from April 28, 2011, and March 24, 2011 are fit for release. Item E, Resolution Number 472011, authorizing the execution of a Community Development Block Grant sub-grantee agreement between the County of DuPage and the Village of Woodridge, Janes Avenue NSA Street Resurfacing, fiscal year 2011-2012. The village has been a recipient of the Community Development Block Grant Funds since 1993 to assist in the financing of projects for the benefit of the community and specifically the Janes Avenue Neighborhood Strategy Area. The village's Janes Avenue NSA Street Resurfacing Project was chosen for funding in the amount of $196,928. County Board approval of the funding is pending, the execution of this sub-grantee agreement by the village. Item F is Resolution Number R482011, authorizing the village administrator of the Village of Woodridge to enter into a sub-grantee agreement with DuPage County, the Community Development Block Grant, $10,375, with the Woodridge Community Resource Center. The Mayor and Board of Trustees adopted Resolution 482010, which authorized the village administrator to apply for Community Development Block Grant Funds to assist in the operation of the Woodridge Community Resource Center. The village has applied for and received the CDBG money from DuPage County since the mid-1990s for the operation of the Resource Center. The agreement for $10,375 will be used for the operation of the center. Item G, Resolution 492011, authorizing the purchase of a 2012 International 7400 SFA 4x2 Dump Truck Chassis Cab from the Prairie Archway International Trucks, Springfield, Illinois. The Public Works Department must replace a 14-year-old heavy dump truck that has already exceeded its programmed life. The unit is a frontline snowplow truck during winter operations, along with being used for sanitary operations and debris hauling throughout the year. The truck is being purchased through the state bid procurement process. Item H, Resolution Number R502011, waiving the competitive bidding process and authorizing the village administrator to execute a certain agreement between the Village of Woodridge and Monroe Truck Equipment for the purchase and installation of equipment on the 2012, or 2012 International 7400 Dump Truck. This item relates to the previous item, and it equips the truck being purchased above with a dump, a snowplow, a liquid application system, and various other items. Item I, Resolution Number R512011, authorizing the purchase of a 2012 Ford F250 4x4 pickup truck from Morrow Brothers Ford in Greenfield, Illinois. The Public Works Department must replace the pickup truck that has already exceeded its programmed life. The truck is utilized for snow plowing during the winter and for various water and sewer operations through the year. The truck is being purchased through the state bid procurement process. Item J, Resolution Number R522011, executing the competitive bidding process and authorizing the village administrator to execute a certain agreement between the Village of Woodridge and Sauber Manufacturing Company for the purchase and installation of equipment on a 2012 Ford F250 4x4 pickup. This item relates to the previous item and, again, provides for the purchase of installation and equipment of the materials, including the service party crane and related equipment. Item K, Resolution R532011, authorizing the purchase of two 2012 Ford F250 4x4 pickup trucks from Morrow Brothers Ford, Greenfield, Illinois. The Public Works Department replaces two pickup trucks that have already exceeded their program life. Both of the trucks are utilized for snow plowing during the winter and for water and sewer operations throughout the year. Again, this is being purchased through the state competitive bid procurement process. Item L, Resolution R542011, authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute change order number one to the contract between the Village of Woodridge and Kendall Excavating and Septic LLC, demolition of the two multifamily buildings formerly Pine Ridge. The village approved a contract with Kendall Excavating in the amount of $98,329 for the demolition of two multifamily buildings formerly Pine Ridge. Due to requirements that were not included in the original contract, including silt, fencing, and erosion control blankets, the change order is presented for consideration to provide and install these items. Item M, Resolution R552011, authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with TPI Building Code Consultants and Independent Contractor for Building Inspection and Plan Review Services. The village previously performed all plan reviews and building inspections in-house. With the departure of a building inspector recently, the village began looking for a short-term contract with a consultant to fill in the building inspector position while the position can be evaluated. Recently, the village put forward an RFP, a Request for Proposal, to determine the best cost and service for village residents and contractors performing work within the village. Through the process, it was decided that TPI provided the best fit and lowest cost. Item N, Resolution R562011, authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute change order number one, Mitchell Drive Water Main Replacement Project Patent Act Construction. Mitchell Drive Water Main Replacement Project is currently underway, but there are additional soil disposal costs that are going to be incurred with the balance of the project. This change order allows for the work to move forward in the most efficient manner possible and to allow the project to be substantially complete prior to the start of the school year, along with incorporating previously incurred spoil charges and repairs to the various two water meters. Item O are minutes, and item P is accounts payable registers for 624, 71, 78, 715, and 722.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. A motion's been made and seconded to approve the omnibus vote as presented. I neglected at the time to inquire as to whether there was a request for separate consideration. Are there any board members that would like separate consideration of any of those matters? Thank you. Hearing none, motion's been made, and second, Deputy Clerk Knight, please call the roll.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham Pizek.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
We have no communication or correspondence this evening. Under my report, there are a number of things that I would like to go over. First is to extend congratulations to Jack Knight, who was selected to Chair of the Illinois Association of Municipal Management Assistance Services and Activities Committee. Congratulations. I would also call to your attention, as you are aware, we had a very successful topic forum on July 19th that featured the Police Department and public safety. The number of residents that attended from various parts of the community and various age groups was commendable, and we have another one coming up on, I believe, the 23rd of August, and I would encourage you to attend that if you're able to do so. I would also want to comment in the July 20 Administrator's Memorandum- I would also want to comment, in the July 20 Administrator's Memorandum, in the general update, there is an overview of the building and code enforcement activity, and while that, that's routine, it's not routine in terms of getting that important work done. And that type of information is beneficial to the board. It reminds us how important and how busy the department is, so thank you for sharing that with us. And once again, almost a standard item on the agenda, our appreciation to the Public Works Department for their continued response during the many storms that we've encountered, and hopefully this is the last time I have to praise the Public Works Department for a long time for that, but please extend our appreciation to your team. Also want to note that Linda Dalton was voted by the Executive Board of the Illinois Government Finance Officers Association as a CFO member for a two-year term in chairing the assistance program, so congratulations to you, Linda. And also to other members of the staff, Maureen Albrecht, Diana McDermott, and Tina Nakoudis, who provided the leadership that resulted in a very successful blood drive held in early July. And also, kudos to Stephanie Smith. It was noted in the Administrator's Memorandum, one of our citizens called to say thank you for the excellent customer service that was provided to her by Stephanie, and we often see that type of citizen feedback from each and every department, and the board certainly applauds all of our employees for that customer-friendly relationship that they put forward. Also, want to note that Maureen Albrecht received her recertification of her Senior Professional Human Resources designation. Those efforts and recertification are an ongoing help to the village, so congratulations to her. And last, it's my pleasure to announce that Julia Sidillo, who was the Assistant Manager in the Village of LaGrange Park, was just selected as the Village Manager in LaGrange Park, and that's a name that may not be familiar to everyone, but she was a management analyst for the Village of Woodridge until she went to at LaGrange Park, so congratulations to her, another former Woodridge employee doing well in the administrative field. And last but not least, I thank you again to the Finance Department for all of their work that results in the budget and the whole management team. And the first pages, well, all of the pages are beneficial, but if you want to get an overview of the budget and our financial situation and policies, it's an excellent document to have on hand, so thank you for all the work that brings us to that. That concludes my report, the Administrator's Report. Ms. Rush?
I have no report this evening.
We have no active agenda item. We have, I'm not going to call it old business, call it new business, we have two board members that we want to extend our birthday congratulations. Happy birthday to Gina, and that was a day or two ago, but congratulations. And likewise, Pam Beavers, Trustee Beavers, happy birthday to you. If there's no other unfinished or new business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and we will immediately convene in workshop session. Motion's been made by Trustee Beavers, second by Trustee Banks, to adjourn. All in favor indicate by the sign aye. Opposed, motion is approved. We are now...